All in favor? Oh, you want to take the roll? Okay, take the roll.
Dr. Cortemil, here. Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morella? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rapidport?
Here.
And Suckerman, here. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here. After we complete the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like you to remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think everyone here realizes a sad event occurred in Montpel approximately a week after graduation when an employee from Lazar passed away. And two of our board members, or maybe a third, had children in school with them at Lazar. And I've asked Dave Modra and Mike Rapidport if they'd like to say three words about Aaron. Mike?
Yes. My daughters had known Aaron since they were three years old. But they've been in Hebrew school together ever since. And I just, looking at it through my daughter's eyes, it was very difficult for her to understand and really come to grips with what had happened to Aaron. And she was very broken up and very, uh, very upset about what had happened. And also, speaking with some of the people at the temple, this is the barbers figure for that class, that graduating class. And they're going to be hopefully doing a project at the temple in the memory of Aaron.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey. Well, again, like my daughter was with Aaron starting early on in preschool and then now in Hebrew school. He was a nice kid. He got the Good Kid Award. They were way amazing, you know, from Pathways. My daughter did too, so I was very happy. So they were very similar. They were both very kind, very generous, very pleasant kids. Aaron and my daughter were locker neighbors at Lazar. And he would always tease her about her messy locker. But, you know, he was very personable. He would talk to, he would talk to you. He wasn't shy. He wasn't afraid to talk to you and be himself. And he was quite a lovely kid. It's very sad what happened. And I feel for his parents, feel for his siblings, and all his friends. And I hope that, you know, we would have terms with him and we can find some joy in his memory.
Thank you, Dave. I know that so many board members at the service of the temple on that Sunday. And I know that the Friday and the Monday, we had grief counselors available. I know teachers were there from Mason and from Lazar. And I thank the administration for doing everything that they did during this very, very difficult time. I know next time, unfortunately for family, probably when the school opens, when the triplets go. And I'm sure that'll bring back memories. But I really appreciate everything that was done by everybody. I think the town did a great job. Unfortunately, it was such a terrible incident that it's hard to comprehend even to this day. So I'd like you all to have a moment of silence, say a prayer, or whatever you'd like to, on behalf of Aaron. Thank you very much. Thank you, public meeting law.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or ordered upon. In accordance with the provision of the act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, including the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township municipal building, all Montpel Township public schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 11, 2019.
Thank you, Dave. Superintendent's report, Renan?
I did want to mention that we received an indication from the New Jersey Department of Education that based on the CUSAC monitoring that the district went through during the course of the last school year, we have been designated as a high-performing district based on the fact that we scored 80% or above in each of the five areas of the district performance review. So a lot of hard work went into that process. And, you know, I want to thank the administrative team for all of their efforts, gathering information, sharing it with the county office team. And of course, I'm very pleased with the outcome of that process.
Thank you. And I would like to congratulate you and your staff on behalf of the board. And since you did such a great job, I understand we're going through it again. There's a motion on the agenda to move it up a couple of years. But again, thank you very much.
Yes, and we'll be dealing with that a little bit later on in the agenda. In terms of the presentations, I did have on the agenda, the Cedar Hill Character Education Committee had prepared, I don't know if you recall, towards the end of the year, they did a fundraiser teaching folks how to do some of their dance moves. And I was unfortunately one of the people that they taught. So we have a little technical difficulty with the video. So I will send that out to the board so you can view it. And please excuse my involvement. But the kids are adorable, so we'll share that. But we do this evening have Charlene Peterson here. As Charlene had mentioned previously, thanks to all the board members for completing the board self-evaluation. I was really ecstatic to see the results. And I'm happy that Charlene's here to kind of discuss that with us tonight. I turn things over to you.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Charlene. Charlene is one of the three D's. Reeve, he's brilliant.
Speak on. Yes, I'm never going to let this one down. Regret the day I ever said that. You know, I guess it's appropriate, as you're talking about CUSAC and the good work that the district is doing, that, you know, as we look at your board self-evaluation, the work that the board is doing also supports that as well. You know, it used to be required by CUSAC, probably like five or six years ago, that boards had to do a board self-evaluation. And then when they relapse some of the requirements, this was one of those requirements that went away. But, you know, we hope that as a board that you would consider it to be a good governance practice to kind of take that step back, reflect, say how we do in the past year, recognizing that you hold the rest of the district accountable, that this should be your way of how you hold yourselves accountable to the work that you're doing. So, you know, as we, as we went through this, said it was great that everyone filled it out. So not only all nine board members, but also the superintendent and the business administrator. So it really is kind of reflective of your team, of, you know, all 11 of you. And, you know, this is based on a 4.0 scale. So over nine indicators. Your average score was a 3.8. And your range, the low was a 3.7 and the high was a 3.9. So, I mean, we were riding right up there, you know, through the whole board self-evaluation. And, you know, sometimes boards are strong in one thing and maybe not strong in another thing. It really is unusual. I can honestly say this is the highest board self-evaluation that I have delivered this year. And but also, you know, for the work of your board, you know, like this isn't an anomaly. This isn't something of how it would just look this year. To me, this is reflective of the work that you do all the time, of the practices that you have here, of your culture here. And as you're changing board members, and, you know, you still are able to maintain it. And I think that that's what separates you from most of the other boards is, you know, some can come in and out and things kind of ebb and flow. But you pretty much have developed a culture of this excellence with the board. And I would strongly ask or encourage that, like you do a program about it, a workshop, because it's something that hardly any other boards can duplicate. So, you know, I would really ask that you consider it. So just wanted to, you know, usually I talk about what your low area was, what your high area is. So, you know, we can say finance was your low area, but a 3.7, like, you know, how low is that really? And the high areas, the board gave itself a 3.9 in policy, board operations, board performance, and board and superintendent relationships. So just kind of, you know, overall identified those as being really strong areas for the board. So I just kind of wanted to just, if everyone's got their coffee, just kind of quickly take you through some of the pages. So the first page here is just what do you value as a board? What are you saying is important to you? So what we look for in New Jersey school boards is how did you rank student achievement? Recognizing that that should be, you know, of the most important things that we do. So you can see your board gave the 3.7, which is a high score, your highest score was board superintendent relationships. And sometimes that's just reflective of what's going on in your district, that you have a really strong relationship. And, you know, so for your board, that's an important area. And, you know, obviously, student achievement is a priority for your district, so. So let's look to page two, where we look at planning. And again, almost, so just wanted to show you as we get into each one of these indicators that the superintendent and the business administrator only fill out the top part about the board and not about you as the member. So that's why there are 11 responses on top and only nine responses then on the bottom. And, you know, one of the things you'll see, I guess, is how clear it is that your board is on the same page. Which again is, you know, sometimes, usually not that often that you see that. Like if we took this evaluation, kind of drew a line, and almost everything is on the side of good and commendable. And, you know, I think on one hand, could just count the adequates that anyone gave to anything on, you know, throughout the entire evaluation, with nothing being an unsatisfactory. So as a group, you are all in agreement about the things that, the work that you're doing and how you do it. And even the language that the board used was language that would, you know, indicate that you truly understand what your role is, you know, what your work is. You know, when we looked at the planning part, you know, and looked at some of the comments, like the board, you know, said goal setting is a real priority for us. It's important that we focus on, you know, on getting the voice of the community. And someone mentioned that you have focus groups to get that information and that you have, you know, regular updates on progress with kind of an end-of-the-year summative update. So again, doing everything you're supposed to, not only setting the goals, taking the community into consideration, but then making sure that you kind of keep your finger on the pulse and you're aware of what's going on and what the updates are. So at any point in this, if anyone has anything they want to add or any questions, you know, please feel free to jump in. The next one, at page four, was policy. So this was in theory that the board evaluated itself one of its highest ones on 3.9. And you can even see some places where you were like 11-0, that the board is, said it was commendable in operating as a policymaking body. And that, again, 11-0 commendable, that, you know, you give and develop policies that give the administration the authority to manage the day-to-day operations. And then down on the bottom, all nine board members said they were commendable in leading policy implementation to the staff and avoiding involvement in day-to-day operation of the district. So again, you know, truly embodying what does it mean to be a policymaking, you know, body as a board and really recognizing, you know, how much more you can get accomplished if you stay in your role and, you know, let the administration stay in their roles and then work together in your respective roles to help advance student achievement and what a difference that makes. And like I said, it's not that easy for a lot of boards to agree to stay in their role and recognize, you know, if you're not doing your job, no one else is. So it's important for you to do that job so that the district as a whole can advance. We go to page six to look at student achievement. Again, lots of areas where the board, you know, was either nine or 10 people saying that you were commendable. And, you know, mentioned in the comments that both the community and the board set high standards for student achievement. And, you know, someone recognized that even though in spite of these high standards as a district, you know, you're also mindful of the stresses that this puts on your students. And, you know, said how important it was for the board to work with the professional staff, to set meaningful goals, and also to recognize the student, you know, the work of your students and recognize their achievements, so. The next was on page eight. And like I said, this was finance, where the board evaluated itself, I can't even call it lowest, but 3.7. And on the bottom, C and D were the two lowest indicators in the whole evaluation. Whereas you, as board members, talked about yourselves and, you know, said and asked, you know, how well you understand and review the monthly reports and the results of the audit. So one person had mentioned as a comment, you know, maybe we could have some training for some of us that feel like we need it. And there was also a comment in the back, I think, when it talked about any other meaning opportunities you might want. And again, someone else mentioned it there. So it's been kind of a common thing. I probably was in four boards this year where the board members had asked the business administrator, you know, to do some training and show them, you know, what they're supposed to be looking for in the report. So I actually even have a PowerPoint that's being passed around if you want it. And then, you know, and then I had another board say, okay, you know, once you've trained me, that's great. But like, you know, someone mentioned that their business minister also made a cheat sheet for them too. They're like, you know, once I've, you know, had the training, then a month later, I forget, you know. So it's good to have some kind of a resource just so you know what numbers are supposed to tie to what, you know, and what things you should be looking at, so. So, but, you know.
That's a good idea, if you could make them, maybe talk to the finance committee next time.
So the board did recognize, you know, that it really appreciates the expertise of the finance committee and said, you know, how closely the committee works with the administration. And as a board, that you really recognize, you know, that you kind of have that unique responsibility of trying to balance, you know, make sure that you are able to give your students the best education that your community can afford. And that looks different for everyone. So you have to figure out what is that balance for Montpel Township? And how do you make sure then that you are, you know, being mindful of the needs of, you know, both the taxpayers and the students? Okay, then the next section on page 10 was board operations. So one of the things I always look at is number two, where it says provides a climate that allows for free and open and orderly discussion by all members at our meetings. And here, the board evaluated itself 11 people, saying the board was commendable in doing that. And the reason I think that's so important is because, you know, that's really where you do your work, is at the board table. And you do your best work if you can hear from everybody. You all bring different skills, different talents, different ideas to the table. And the fact that all of you feel that you are respected and can say what, you know, you think is important for the rest of the board to hear, I think, you know, really speaks a lot about your ability then at the end to make the best decisions for the students, knowing that everybody felt comfortable, you know, providing their voice. You were also, you know, part of this was also recognizing your method of governance, which in your board's case is using the committee system. So at the board also mentioned, you know, that they feel like the committee effectively helps the board do its work, that as members, you trust the work of the committee. Your committee members become, you know, experts in the work that they're doing and then effectively communicate to the rest of you. So again, this is an area that's really a challenge for a lot of boards, to have that trust, to have all the pieces work and to, you know, to really, like I said, make the committees be as effective as, you know, you guys are indicating that is the case for you here. And then, you know, you also talked about two kinds of how, I thought it was interesting that someone said, you know what, we really like each other. Yeah?
Well, except for Paul.
Okay, well, almost everybody. And just, you know, use words like professional, collaborative, you know, utilize the consensus process. So, you know, those are all things, again, to talk about the work that you do. Then the next section was board performance on page 12. So here again was another one of the highest areas of the board. And you can see that there's a lot of places where the board evaluated itself 11-0 or 9-0 on the bottom. And again, as I looked at words coming out of the comments, it was mutual, you know, mutual trust, respect, professional. Ethics is very important to this board. And maintaining confidentiality is also important to this board. Then the next piece on page 14 was board and superintendent relationship. Again, like I said, that was another one of the highest areas at a 3.9 with, again, a lot of scores of 9-0, 11-0. And, you know, usually, you know, we say, okay, kind of what is that formula that works? And usually, and it's kind of the things that I saw in your comments, having a good, you know, trust, respect, good communication, having a good supportive professional working environment, everyone understanding their roles and then working together in the, you know, in the best interest of the students. And the next piece of this on page 16 was board and staff relationships. You know, in a lot of times, boards, you'll say, well, how can I have a good relationship with the staff if all of my communication, everything gets bundled through the superintendent? How does that happen? So, you know, and really, it comes down to, you know, do we recognize the work that our staff does? Do we respect our staff? Do we support their professional development needs? Do we have good personnel policies in place for them? So those were all of the things, again, as you looked at your comments, somebody had said, you know, we're respectful of the staff. We recognize the great accomplishments that they bring to the district. We, and then also, the board was asked, you know, talked about how important it is to the board as well to be visible in the school and the community and what a difference that makes in the work that you do. Then the last of the nine indicators was board and community. And this is an area that's a challenge for a lot of boards. And especially, a lot of times, I see the number seven, you have an effective community relations program. And here, you said 10 of you said that the district was, the board was commendable in doing that. And for many boards, they're just, that's usually one of the lowest areas that I see in most evaluations. And then I thought it was great on the bottom that all nine of you said that you were commendable in promoting the positive image of the district within the community. So again, an important role for you as the board. And, you know, as, again, looked at the comments and mentioned how much the district encourages parenting and community involvement, how involved the board members are, how connected you are to the community, and the fact that you all work together for the students. And the last piece of this on page 20 is that you were asked, recognizing the board's highest priorities to improve student achievement, what are three major challenges currently facing the district? So we looked to see where there's any kind of common responses or maybe more, at least more than two of you said the same thing. So some people, a few people mentioned declining enrollment as something to consider, attracting and retaining high-quality staff, funding and finances, creating the balance for your students. And then there were different areas of student achievement that were mentioned throughout. And then the very last piece of this was asking as a board what kind of training you might want. And it was kind of, again, you know, different than, a couple people mentioned policy and just, you know, again, basically saying such and such stuff, the gist of what we do, that we, you know, can always, you know, consider that to be a focus. And then again, I think, is there again where somebody had mentioned the finance training. So again, I just want to say, job well done. I appreciate the fact that you all took the time to fill it out. You know, as you're working on toward board certification, this is one of the requirements of board certification. So, you know, as we continue down that path, we need the 16 credit hours in four years. We're just kind of finishing up the third year here. We'll be finishing up with 12 credits. So we're, if we're right on that track, we're trying to get four credits per year. We're almost exactly about where we need to be. And then all the other, other things, like the policy check and the, I think I've done all that already. So really, the last piece of this then is just to, and you had to support 8% or higher in CUSAC, so you did, in the governance section. So we did that. So the last piece is just acquiring these last four hours. So, you know, we
We'll do that this year.
Yeah, so we might want to think about in the fall, you know, maybe scheduling something, just kind of keep it maybe once a quarter or something, just to kind of keep ourselves
Can we get one point a quarter?
You can have, you can do it all in one day if you want.
They just want you to come up and bother, so.
Anyone have any questions at all about it?
Just, Chris, I mean, in the districts that don't have as high of a self-evaluation, I mean, I'm taking a guess, maybe I'm right, maybe I'm wrong, but you can tell me, that it's probably indicative of having a divided board, where you might have a say 63, six to three board, if you want to put it that way, like doing some places. And while the, yeah, while the three, six people running it high, the other three are blasting it because they don't like the way it's being run. Is that, but normally, is that what happens a lot?
It's that, I mean, but we're finding that more and more boards are becoming that. So before I
You're going to exist to three, you mean?
Or, yeah, becoming divided, or there are some members that when they come into the fold, have a separate agenda, or, you know, there isn't a process in place to say, like this is the way we do things around here. You know, these are our high standards. You know, when you're coming here, this is what our expectation is. Instead, things are just kind of going all over the place.
You know, one observa, first of all, I'm very proud to serve on this board. And it's true, we all, we love, really, we love each other. And we're very supportive and we're there for each other. I think one of the telling things about this evaluation is the fact that when it comes to the top part, where we talk about the board as a whole, we collectively feel that as a board of the whole, we do commendable job, good job. When it comes to evaluating ourselves personally, our scores
You're harder on the
We were harder on ourselves than we were collectively as a board of education. And what that tells me, and I think it's a credit to all my colleagues, is that there's a yearning individually for us to continue to try to do better because we feel we're not doing as good as, you know, we're almost not living up to the
To what the
To what the rest of the board is accomplishing. And I think that's like spectacular. And maybe that is a distinguishing feature on us from, you know, other boards because we want to continue to do better individually.
I think one other thing too is that things like the goals and stuff, we have a superintendent that sort of lays the, helps the outline. And it's very easy for us to follow that, not just in the areas of personnel and all that other stuff. She keeps us on track. And I think that's important because you've got nine crazies here, maybe. And she keeps all the crazies, she's the ringmaster. But, yeah, I've been in school districts that did not have the type of superintendent that we're fortunate to have. And Mike, getting back to your question, it's not just the board 63, superintendent has a big role to play in that. And if the superintendent's cuckoo, it affects everything else. And I think we're very fortunate that we have a situation here which is not there. And we have, as Karen very nicely put it, we get along with each other, we kid around with each other, but we know what business has to be done and we do it. And I think that's indicative of how we all take our job. And I think that's why I'm very happy to be part of this board. And I think the results show that great job that we've been doing. Other people may not agree, but we know the job we're doing, which is important. Michael?
And just to follow up on what all of you said, and particularly what Mike was saying about the boards that are divided, either 63 or 54. I think that type of situation is indicative sometimes of board members who come to a board with personal agendas and do not understand their role as a board member. And what I've noticed in this room, working with a superintendent, is that people do understand their role and don't step outside their role and create these divisions with agendas of their own.
And we've been picking up our attendance at the county meetings. And hopefully with the convention coming, we'll be able to send a couple people down there. But I think the county meetings are great[1798.98] But I think the county meetings are great and we're getting better and better participation, but there's nothing else. Oh, Dave?
Just want to, I'd like to thank the superintendent and business administrator for their fine reviews of us. You, you all were right there with us saying we're doing a good job. And, you know, it's nice to know that you agree that we're also doing a good job. So, thank you.
They were the satisfactors.
Well, and the first one I'm looking at, David, was ten-one, so I assume one of the one was the business administrator.
I guess he wasn't unsatisfied.
Clearly I need to bore you more with financial reports.
Anything else? Charlene, we will see you in the fall again, I guess.
Sounds good.
At the county meeting or, but thank you so much.
We'll schedule you to come back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, anytime.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, guys. And thank you all for completing this and being honest and be part of this board. I think we all should be very proud of ourselves. Business administrative report, Katine has a brief PowerPoint presentation. Keeping in the three B principle, be brilliant, be brief. Yeah?
Brief, brief.
All right, Katine?
So I just wanted to give you an update on the construction projects that are going on this summer. As you know, we did the first four buildings last summer and we are completing the last three buildings, which are Hilldale, Valley View, and Woodmont this summer. That will then have us have been through all seven buildings once to complete the referendum projects that were originally outlined. In the case of Hilldale, we are working on bathroom renovations, gym upgrades, and the media center renovations. That's true with all three. And here are pictures of the Hilldale Media Center. So what you see is the floor has been removed, they're beginning to now, they're going to start to do the painting. One of the things that you all approved at the last meeting was the enclosure of the media center in glass. Where those bookcases are across the back there, that's actually where the glass will go. All that is open air right now and there will be glass windows that will continue up and then doors to close off the media center from the hallways. The bathrooms have all been demoed, so at this point, all of the demolition has been completed and we will begin to now move in and do painting, put in fixtures, the sinks. This is the gym. And one of the things that I think is notable in the gym is how different those cabinets look. Prior to us coming in and doing the work, they were just white cabinets. Now what you see is they're beginning to tie them in to the mats that are on the back wall and the side wall. So you're really seeing it come together. The painters were in there today. After the painting is done, then they'll start doing the floor, but you see the floor's been ripped up and the new floor will go in on top of that. For Valley View, the media center has been completely ripped out. That is the floor and all the bookcases have been emptied. There is a change order that is on the addendum to recover all of those bookcases and the cut, the top ledges that the, that the bookcases are on. When you're in the hallway, it's actually the top of those bookcases that you see. So that will give a uniform look to both the hallway as well as to the media center. Just like at Hilldale, you have the bathrooms all being ripped up with the plan to put in the fixtures as we had done at the high school in Lazar, the other two elementaries last year. We'll be doing the epoxy floors on the floor. So where you see the tile, that will be overlaid with the epoxy. And then the gym and Valley View. Valley View was one of the unusual spaces where they had originally, when they built the building, they had had lunch tables that had been inset into the walls. And so one of the things that I thought was interesting was those purple spots are where those lunch table inserts had gone. The last one, the one that's to the far left, that's actually the brick wall, the outside wall you see there. So these insets set into the wall, they took those out and then they're putting up sheet rock. When this is all done, it will just be a complete wall, you won't see anything. But in the interim, you actually can see the brick wall shining through. One of the changes in the change orders is to go and clean under the stage, which is to the left of that brick that you see there. And then Woodmont, this is the media center, completely emptied. Up here where that runs the length, that, that black that you see, that actually used to be a soffit that they now have removed, so it's going to open up the space a lot. Again, bathrooms all being converted. And then the gym, it's amazing how big the gyms look when you take everything out of them. And the same type of thing will be done at Woodmont. So considering it's the fifteenth or around the fifteenth of July, you're seeing a lot of movement in a very, very short amount of time. None, none of the contractors could get started until after graduation. So in the course of two, two and a half weeks, they have done all the demo and you're beginning to see them putting the spaces back together with the new finishes. Now, those three schools, although being the primary area that we're focusing on, they're not the only areas. We had mentioned a few meetings ago that we would be working on the gym floors at the high school and Lazar. What we found was when they did the painting of the mustangs on each of the floors, the rooms were very warm, it was the summer, the wood had expanded. And when they did the painting, the paint did not quite get in between the wood slats. So as the winter came, particularly like at Lazar, our mustang looked like a zebra. So what we did was we conditioned the spaces, they came back in, they took the first layer of polyurethane off, they went back in, they painted in between the slats and then they re-put on the polyurethane. And this is the one at the high school, and again, the, the gym floor looks great again. The high school is also getting HVAC work done. This is, the five and six hundred wing is getting air conditioning. So there is an example of one of the classrooms where they've taken out the ceiling and the soffits in order to have the ducts be put in. What they'll be doing is putting ducts in those runs to go and bring the air conditioning into those rooms. This will then complete most of the air conditioning throughout the district. We have a item on the addendum for the board to approve, the purchasing of about forty of these mini split units, which will finish up the remaining academic spaces. We are on target to meet the board's goal of all academic spaces are air conditioned by September first. One of the other projects that we will also be working on will be the gym windows in the main gym. Those windows are the original windows to the gym. We, what we will be doing is replacing those so that they will match the windows that you see in the auxiliary gym at the high school. What that will provide is when you're looking at the building from Horse Neck Road, the facade across that whole front of the building, both gyms will have the same color windows. So it will be all unified. And then one of the really large elements of this referendum is the tying in of all of the heating and cooling units throughout the district into central building management systems for each building. And then those individual building management systems into a district-wide building management system. The idea being that using such systems will enable us to control the heating and cooling in a more effective way, both from an energy efficiency as well as a comfort. And so throughout this year, they've been running wires to tie in the heating and cooling systems. As we come to, toward, coming towards the end of, of that process, we will be adding in, it's on the addendum, humidity detectors, CO2 detectors, and we will be tying in the individual mini splits, the individual air conditioning units into the system. And that will then provide a more complete control of the heating and cooling district-wide. As we start to move from now, the middle of July into the middle of August, we will be now finishing up the installation of finishes and fixtures in the bathrooms, media centers, and gyms. So as I come back a month from now, those pictures of everything being ripped up and there's no flooring and there's nothing on the walls, we will be going into completed spaces as we prepare for September. As I mentioned, we'll be doing the window replacement in the main gym. Those windows, we're just checking on color so that we get the same tint on those windows. And those will be being put in for manufacturing. So our expectation is that they'll be installed somewhere in September, October. That'll be done over a weekend. And then we will, as I mentioned, we'll be having the air conditioning of all academic spaces for September. The building management system's coming online as we enter into September. And then the ESIP project. So we broke the ESIP into two pieces. Phase one was the lighting replacements, converting all the ballots over to LED lighting. That process should begin in August, that will run all of next year. The plan is that it would be done somewhere around the end of school in 2020. The second element of the ESIP, which we haven't moved forward on yet, we will be moving forward on a solar element and then a replacement of air conditioning elements, ones that are the older air conditioners in the, in the district. And that will be then, the plan would be the installation of those solar elements next summer. Does anyone have any questions regarding the projects either going on now or going to be going on?
Dave?
Yeah, for the Valley View Media Center, well, Hilldale is going to have a glass wall. What about a glass wall for Valley View? No, is that not?
No, they wanted it all open.
They wanted it all open?
Yes, yes.
Why didn't Hilldale want theirs closed?
Oh, it's a fire code official.
Oh, it's a fire, I was coming from lunch meeting. Okay, I remember. And then with, with the last item, the ESIP lighting placement, is that going to disrupt teaching?
No, that's all after hours.
That's after hours, okay.
Yes, everything's after hours.
And the last question, what's the background? That's not our building, is it?
No, it's not our building. No, it was, it was a stop.
Yeah, that's staircase.
Yeah, I wish I could have done that, but no, that's not one of ours.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to do it anyway, though.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, Woodmont, I know, a couple of years ago, there'd been a lot of student artwork done in the bathrooms that they're renovating. I was told that some stuff's being done to somehow preserve that.
Yeah, so what we ended up doing was we took pictures of all that artwork. And if you walk down the hallway, down towards the business office, there is the emblem, the Montville emblem on a piece of plastic. Those pictures are being converted into decals that will be mounted on plastic boards and then put back up into the bathrooms. So the superhero boys bathroom will still be the superhero boys bathroom. They'll just be mounted on pieces of plastic instead of on the walls.
Thank you very much, Katine?
No problem.
And next month, we'll see the final project.
Yeah, because we're doing great.
It's twenty, right? Uh, next thing, we're going to have committee reports. Karen?
Well, the, uh, the facilities and finance meeting happened right before our closed session. And Katine went through the PowerPoint presentation with us and the photographs. There's really not much more to add to that, except that the board will be transitioning to a Google Doc system for our board meetings. And as you all know, that will be free as opposed to the board docs that we're paying for now. As the chair of the finance and facilities committee, I want to say a thank you and commend Katine, as well as the entire business office, Dr. Rovatar, and the administrative team, central office, and in particular, the principals at each of the schools. This was a huge undertaking and our schools look beautiful. I haven't been to all of them, but those that I see, they're, they look, the ones that have been completed are huge improvements. And this has, while this was a very large, complicated project, it's been shepherded with a lot of care. Very few hitches, very few cost overruns, or I don't want to call it a cost overrun, but few, few change orders, let's put it that way. We, we have no cost overruns, we don't. And I, I just, I want to say thank you. Our schools look great and it's, it's happening in a very pleasant way.
I think we'll all concur on the committee. Curriculum, Michael?
Uh, no report. Anything we need to do?
We're probably meeting in August, we're in August.
Okay.
Paul says not yet, communications, Karen?
No report.
Uh, safety's not here, uh, Hawkman. Delegate in the Jersey School Board, Karen?
Really, uh, no report.
Morris County, I'm sorry, Morris County, Mike?
Uh, no meetings since last.
Drug awareness, Mr. Pong?
No meetings in the summer.
Mustangs, Mike?
Uh, meeting not till September.
Okay, any school liaisons? I don't think so. Okay. Next part of the agenda, where has anybody in the public has any questions about items on the agenda, which includes two addendums, one is the appointment of a Spanish teacher and the other one is the change orders that Katine has been mentioning. Any questions from the public on any agenda items? Okay. I wouldn't entertain, entertain a motion to approve the agenda plus the two addendums. One addendum is L three number seventeen and the other one is K five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So moved.
Second.
Five, six, so moved, second please.
Second.
All right. Any comments on the minutes? I see that one of our board members is donating dumbbells.
He must be in mint condition.
They are, they are in mint condition, I gotta tell you.
Oh, my God.
They're probably worth about ten dollars and he's taking that five thousand off on his.
That's what we see.
This is what you get for making a donation.
Anything on K? Can't wait, Dave, you know.
I intend to.
K, K, L? M? N? All right, roll call please, Mr. Slump.
Mr. O'Brien?
I on all items except abstain on K seven, number nine one six four two.
Dr. Modra?
Yep, all, yes to everything except J one two.
Dr. Cortenio?
Yes, except for K one check number nine one five eight one.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, for all except K check number nine one five eight four.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes, to all except K one check ninety one six five two.
Ms. Suckman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, oh, and check, I'm sorry, I couldn't find the email, but I was on my notes one night.
She'll fill in. Nine one six four three.
Nine one six four three, thank you.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes, except check number nine one six oh six. Okay. Next part of the agenda is, we don't have any closed web session, any old business? General board comments, new business?
It is not, general, just a general board comment. I'm just looking at the kindergarten numbers for next year and I will say, I express this turinade. I do have some concern about the kindergarten class size at Woodmont, especially since right now it's sixteen, but I guess the projection of possibly seventy-four. And I know from past history, that seventy-four is probably going to go up. And with approximately, I don't know, thirty-five percent of class being from the apartments, I'm just worried about the class sizes and the mobility. I don't know if there's anything we can do yet, but I'm just saying, just look at the trends. Right now, Woodmont has the highest numbers for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And I guess I'm just bringing it out there, Felix, I just want everybody to make sure you need to keep an eye on the situation because this thing could very easily be getting out of hand pretty soon.
Yeah, I think it was communicated to some of us that superintendent is monitoring the kindergarten and if the numbers are there, I'm sure there'll be an additional teacher.
Right, we'll be making a decision by the end of this week. I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that, you know, we are not sensitive to those class overs. I guess this just, you know, it, it's something that we, we try and we do have a staffing plan in place if we need to add another section of Woodmont. We don't have to go, you know, through a big process to identify a teacher. We have those kind of waiting in the wings. So by the end of this week, we can, you know, make that decision. Certainly, it, you know, I just don't want, I think some of your comments taken out of context could put the Woodmont community in panic and I certainly don't want to leave them with that impression.
No, I, I think anybody here, sixty-eight, seventy, knows you're going to put a fourth section in. So nobody should be upset and it's just a matter of when you want to make the cutoff for the enrollment. Anything else?
Yeah, really more than trend, I was concerned about that. You have three classes in a row that have the biggest class sizes plus the mobility and I'm just a little concerned. I'm just a little concerned with that synergy, but you know, we're just keeping an eye on it.
Mike, she told you it's, I don't understand, we're going to put a fourth in. Anything else? All right, public participation on any items not on the agenda, anybody would like to speak? Two members of the public? Okay, next meeting is on August twentieth in the same room. I would entertain the motion, before I entertain the motion, thank you all for the great job you did on the evaluation. And now I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
A moved.
Second.
Second, by Rappaport, go Brian Rappaport, all in favor? All right, and I, opposed?